Yeah, I'll call to order the study session of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. June 20th at Coachella. And please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Roll call, please.
Good afternoon, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be absent, Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar will also be absent for this meeting, and Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, so we have one item of discussion. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
Not on my side, thank you, John.
Oh yeah, good, good idea, not, not over there in Shafter.
No, nothing here.
I don't think, I don't think we have any here either.
I'll just say, just for the record, we do have a few members online that I don't recognize. So if there's a member on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature.
Yeah, alright, so we have one item of discussion, that's our classification and compensation study. And just to make clear that we are, this is a study session, so there will be no action taken. And Scott.
Can I ask one question first? We, we did this four years ago?
Two years.
Two years ago.
That's when we initiated the study.
Okay, and that, and this is required by, by law?
No.
It's not required by law, okay, so this is not a requirement like.
But didn't we put something in our MOU?
We had a commitment in our.
Where we committed to doing this, so this is really the impetus for this.
That's okay, that's correct, that's not required by law.
That's okay, got it.
Great, okay, thank you. Good afternoon, President Powell, members of the board, staff and constituents. Scott Hunter, Director of Human Resources. In 2020, HR made a commitment to our bargaining units that we would seek approval from the board to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study analysis. In that commitment, we also indicated that we would have no obligation to implement any changes, and if changes were recommended, that we would follow the meet and confer process as it relates to the impact of those changes. In January of 2021, the board authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Coffin Associates to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study. Having a solid classification plan is vital for any agency or organization as it provides the framework or foundation for agency objectives. It further facilitates specific HR functions such as recruitment and selection, talent management, performance management, pay structure and workforce planning. We are here today to provide insight on the study, the findings, and answer any questions and discuss the next steps as it relates to the classification and compensation study. I have here with me, on my right-hand side is Debbie Owens from Coffin Associates, and then I believe we have the remote Garrick Kramer, who is also with Coffin Associates. These two representatives from Coffin Associates conducted the study for us and have worked with the district as it relates to the study and the findings. Without further ado, I'm going to throw it over to Debbie Owens from Coffin Associates to lead the study and facilitate the study to the members, the board and our constituents.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody, I'm Debbie Owen from Coffin Associates. I'm a senior project manager with Coff and I've been the project manager for this project. And on the sort of Zoom call is Garrick Kramer, he is the project director. And today, we're going to be going through the study itself and talking about some of the key sort of the processes, the outcomes, and sort of the next steps for the study itself. Here's the agenda, taking a look at the background for the study, okay. Taking a look at sort of the overall results for the classification and the compensation study. Then we are going to go deep, more deeply into the classification study process itself, and then the compensation process and talk about the next step. So really, this is kind of the, this is really the sort of timeline and the actual sort of deliverable part of this study itself. One of the things that, and I'm going to be rated misfired, just because it's a little far for me, okay. So first of all, what we've done in the, in the classification study is to prepare our draft recommendations. And in that comes recommendations around, what, what are the class concepts that you have? What are the titling conventions that you have here? What are the different levels of work that you have? What categories of work? And how many job classifications do you have? So the, the classification piece itself is really looking at the infrastructure of your plan and developing some new classifications or revising some. The second one is essentially the, and we have, we provided the deliverables on those, and I'll go into the more detail later. The other thing we've done is we did conduct a total compensation study. And the deliverables from that are currently under review. That was about 97 job classes in 12 agencies, total compensation, so pretty comprehensive report. The deliverables are there, okay, and, and certainly we.
Hello, Mr. Bear.
I think we, in the room as well.
Pardon me, you broke up a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up and see if we still carry.
Hello, Mr. Bear.
I think we, in the room as well.
Pardon me, you broke up a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up and see if we still carry.
Hello, Mr. Bear.
I think we, in the room as well.
Pardon me, you broke up a little bit.
See if we still carry.
Hello, Mr. Bear.
I think we, in the room as well.
So I can now see you all on the YouTube feed, but not on the Zoom. I cannot hear you on either.
This is Peter.
Oh, there you are, I can hear you on the Zoom now.
We had a loop going for a while.
I think we still have a loop going, John.
So assuming we get going again, how long do you think this will take?
Try to condense it as much as we can.
So Jim, I can hear you on the Zoom, but I have, don't have any video. So apparently you can hear me.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
We can see you and hear you.
Oh, well, I can hear you, and I can.
Tell you what page number.
Perfect. Yeah, no, perfect. Perfect, I'm with you.
Some pages have numbers.
We're on the study background, eh?
Complexity is not different at some of those levels, and so what you do is you basically collapse them into levels which are more appropriate for the work that's being done. And you're going to see by doing that, those two strategies and the use of what we call broad classifications, which I'll go through in, in later, essentially, that's how we were able to achieve those, that outcome and the reduction of almost 200 job classifications. In this, in this total compensation survey, there were 97 job classifications that were surveyed in that, in that market of 12 agencies. And then, and. The district was 5.8% above the market. And then when you took a look at total compensation, it was 4.2% above the market. So again, in both situations, the, the, the sort of, the averages of all of the classifications that were surveyed come, come across, come as above the market. So I'm gonna sort of move down into some of the classification study process itself. And I want to talk just a little bit about what classification is, because there's different points of view around what, what it comprises. But essentially, a classification plan looks at all the jobs that an organization has, and then it identifies what are the different categories of work, what are the different types of work? And through that process, you develop a classification plan and use, use the, provide, basically, develop the supporting documentation of class descriptions. But it's actually not used, one of the things that's not about, it's not about the individual, it's really about what is that body of work? That body of work should look the same irrespective of who is doing that. So it's not about how competent an employee is, okay? It's also not about how long they've been in, in, in that classification, it's not to done, not as a reward system. So many times you'll see the classification plans get used to reward performance, when in fact, that's not the purpose. And I say that only because it's very common, you have multiple levels of job classifications, and there's a lot of pressure to move employees throughout an organization, moving up to that next classification is a very common practice. And as I said, it should essentially be the same irrespective of who is. You, as opposed to the individuals themselves, and that's something that is, is key to the study. Any study for classification, and the last thing that's not on there is that it's also. Empire staffing issue, it's not about classification. Whoops, that was bad. To go through these quickly and certainly.
Let me just make sure, Robert, Dan, there's that mic button on there, if you guys can just be careful. Yeah, please leave that, okay, thank you. Okay, sorry.
I wanted to get through this more quickly than I might otherwise, but certainly if there are questions, I certainly want to be able to answer them. But we start off the project with the initial meeting with, with the study project team and management. And there really is to take a look at, so what are some of the overall goals of the study itself? What are some of the pain points you have in your classification and your compensation system? What is it that you're trying to achieve through this study? Because we want to be certain that whatever that outcome is, or whatever that goal is, that there's a process or a strategy to do that with. The next thing we did was held orientation meetings with employees. We have a document called a position description questionnaire, or a PDQ. And it's about 25 pages long, it's a really, really, it's a very comprehensive document. It essentially asks for different aspects of the work that someone's performing, and to be able to take a look at what are some of the duties and responsibilities? What are some of the decision-making points that they have? What are some of the knowledge and, and, and sort of skills that are needed? So it's a very comprehensive document that gathers all of that data. What's important about it as well is that it's completed by the employee, but it's also, is also reviewed by the supervisor and by the manager. So essentially, you have three different perspectives on that single position to be able to understand, here's the duties and responsibilities, here's the comments from the supervisor, here's the comments from the manager. And with that document, you now have very comprehensive documentation for every single job. And we definitely encourage employees to complete PDQs because it is the audit trail that we use for all of our studies. And once we've gone through the PDQ process, we, and return to Coff, okay, we take a look at them, we basically will put a team together to essentially conduct what we call employee and supervisor interviews. And these are really all about, about, these are classification meetings to go through the, the PDQ itself and to ask them deeper questions around the work itself so that they can get a really good picture of, of some of the things that don't come out in a PDQ, maybe complexity of work or other things that you want to be able to ensure that you, that you gather that information. That's the second part of the process, so you have the written documentation, you have that sort of verbal meeting with the consultant, and that gives you a really good overview picture of each and every job that you're looking at. From there, if you can imagine that you have 570, these are however many we have, okay. The team now gets together and says, look, and, and as the project manager, my job is to say, when you take a look across this organization, are you seeing directors? Are you seeing managers? Are you seeing supervisors? Are you seeing professional staff? So those are the class concepts that we put together to be able to describe, here's the different natures and categories of work, and here's the different sort of levels of classifications that we see. That's a really, that is a very, I would say, comprehensive process, because the team themselves need to be, need to be essentially aligned in terms of how they're looking at it, okay? And as the project manager, my job is to make certain that, that they do have that, that guidance, and at the same time, make certain that by the time we get to the point of developing those class concepts, that there's a clear understanding of what the different jobs, the different categories of work are. So it describes what are managers, what are directors, what are supervisors, what are crew leaders, what is a specialist? So that documentation is called a class concept, and it serves as the foundation for your class plan. Come back to the district and say, okay, take a look at this, let us know whether we missed anything in these different categories of work and levels of work, because we're going to move forward and develop the classification plan itself. So from that document comes your classification plan, and I will go through that in terms of what that comprises. It basically outlines each and every job classification that we're going to recommend. And from there, we move forward into developing class descriptions. So as you can see, it's a really long process, a very comprehensive process, to get from a point of looking at these numbers of positions to coming to a, a, a document that says, when we take a look through all of this, here's our recommendations around what that class plan should look like. From there, we essentially take that out to, we met with your management team, okay? And we, and basically got their feedback on it as well, because we want to be certain that if there's anything that we missed, that we take care of it right from the very beginning. The next step in the process, okay, is going to be an employee supervisor review, that's not something that we, it's something that's in our work plan, we still have to discuss with HR what that looks like. And ultimately, we're going to, we're going to be coming down to the final report or the draft of final reports. So some of the things around the strategies for the class plan that I just want to kind of highlight here, one is that developing the class concepts that I talked about, okay. I identified some opportunities, where can we do class consolidation? Do we have job, do we have positions throughout the district that are performing the same work? And if so, why are they classified differently and can we consolidate them? The next one essentially was to take a look at the levels of work that you have within your job classifications, because some of them had two levels, or three levels, or four, or even, I think, five in one case, okay? That's a lot of job levels, okay, and trying to identify, what are the, what are the distinguishing characteristics between these five levels that we can reasonably say there are five? Or should we be looking at a different way of, of basically developing a classification around these levels? And that's, again, that's something that we, we looked at, but clearly came back to your management team and said, look, here's some of the things that we're seeing here, help us understand whether we're on the right, on, on the right path or not, okay? They also wanted to, wanted to be certain that we looked at minimum qualifications. And this really goes to the heart of some of your class descriptions as well. But whenever you're putting together a, a, a class spec or a documentation on a job, you need to be sure that you have the right minimum qualifications. What that means is that if you have, ask for a degree which is higher than the work, which is described in the, in the class description, or if there are certifications that you have listed, okay, that they are actual requirements for the work itself. And, and that will help you, whenever you're recruiting, one of the things you want to be certain of is that you're not putting in artificial barriers to employment for people who might otherwise qualify by putting in education or experience, which is more than what is needed for the job. So that was the next thing we, we looked at. We also looked at the FLSA exemptions to see which sort of classes were exempt from the FLSA sort of laws, okay, and which were not. And ultimately, it was really to kind of gain an understanding and help, help sort of, help the organization kind of see how their, sort of how their classification plan feeds into their pay equity system. And that, to have a, to have an equitable classification and compensation system is really the goal of the study itself. I want to talk a little bit about broad classifications, because you already had some, but I wanted to explain what that means. Essentially, when you take a look at jobs, what you're looking for, those that have the similar, sort of similar duties and responsibilities, minimum qualifications, knowledge and skills and abilities, okay? That doesn't mean that they are all performing the same tasks, okay? It just means that the classification self is broad enough to cover multiple assignment areas, provided that work is not more complex. So that is something which essentially is not really new, but I think we took it to a kind of different level in the district in terms of saying, here's some, here's some classifications that we consider are part of a broad classification system, and here's why. One of the things that we also sort of look at is the fact that employees can come in with a broad set of, of sort of skill sets, okay? And then basically, they, which prepare them for the actual job itself. So again, it's one of these things where you're looking, taking a look at not just the work itself, but also sort of what does it take to do this work, and how can an employee come in to the organization? What do they need to do that with? The other thing I really stress here is that many times, there's an organizational need for, for flexibility in work assignments. And, and certainly that is key to, to broad classifications, you don't, you want to be able to say, positions can work in this area, or this area, or this area, which gives a lot of flexibility in terms of how you assign work. It also gives a lot of flexibility, I think, for employees as well, to be able to move across an organization or work in different areas that they might not otherwise be able to, because they would have to be reclassified. So again, broad classifications really kind of work for employees and for, for management. The idea around work flexibility, just so that we're really clear, isn't that you're going to be assigning tasks which are more complex or anything? It's just that there is that, there, there, that is the sort of, one of the things you can do is say, I have work here, here and here, the work is not more complex, and so I can put them into a broad classification. And it, as I said, it talked about, you know, skill growth for employees. And then finally, one of the things that is challenging around broad classifications is the recruitment and selection process. Because you do need to be specific in your flyers around what kind of skill sets you're looking for. And that way, you'll get the applicant pool that you're looking for.
Can I interrupt you, Debbie?
Sure.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
This is not a subject that has any interest for me at all, I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, I like the fact that we had 340, and we're going to go down to, but I'm not managing HR here as a director. This is not what we do. And I'm surprised that this is a study session, I don't know why, I guess because we made a commitment in our MOU. We, we're doing the study, it's not even done yet. And I just, can we just maybe just hit a couple high points? And I know you probably traveled here from far away, but.
No, that's okay, I, I don't.
You know, 10 minutes, wrap it up, kind of a thing? Isn't rude, I, I just, this is, has no bearing on anything I do at the Water District.
One of the reasons why we wanted to do a study session is because it does impact workforce. And we want to make sure that currently our classification plan that we have is not really stable. And we want to make sure that we have a very solid classification plan going forward. One of the interests that the board has had is how do we develop staff? How do we train staff? How do we meet our strategic objectives? Without a classification plan and a compensation plan, we can't get there, so.
I get it, and, and so we have a watch that works really well. I don't really care how many pieces are in the watch, you know, or how, how they, how they interact with each other. It just, just, you know, make it work. And, and it seems like you've done a good job, so I'm not criticizing you or your firm, it's just, you know, another hour of this, I don't see how that benefits.
One of the, the, the next steps out, out of this classification, compensation, study session would be that we would be coming to you in closed session and providing a recommendation, because there could be, there's 57 classifications that we haven't talked about yet that are impacted as it relates to above or below the market median. So there will be a time that we come to the board to seek guidance from the board, or provide a recommendation to the board, whether or not, one, we don't want to make any changes to the classification or compensation plan, or two, we've further reviewed the classifications, and we may be saying, hey, we have eight classifications or 10 classifications that are 25% above market. Should we be 25% above market? So we may be seeking direction from the board to say, do we want to, to solidify that compensation structure and make that more aligned with the market median whenever our compensation philosophy comes into play? And I think that's, we just wanted to make sure that you all. and make that more aligned with the market median whenever our compensation philosophy comes into play? And I think that's, we just wanted to make sure that you all understood that, hey, we have a classification plan.
I get it. And and I, and I have a lot of confidence in the work you've done. I've already read through the whole plan. I mean, it's just, you know.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty complete as it is, right?
So it is. So maybe, maybe what we just show then, since you've, since, since I understand what you're saying, let's just go move forward to the fifty-seven classifications, maybe on the compensation that talks about the above and below.
Okay.
And then show them the example of a job description. That's one of the things, disaster service recovery worker, we're in for a special district. We're bound by certain state laws and requirements for our employees. So if there is a disaster, if we have a, you know, a potential natural disaster, what is the responsibility of our staff, our workforce? How do we plan that? So at the end of the day, that all comes into play because we have, you know, the impact as it relates to that. But we'll go right here and we'll just talk a little bit about the the compensation, and then we'll show the examples.
Sure.
So for Director Nelson, we're on slide twenty-nine.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. So as I said earlier, on average, for the, for the survey classes, we were five point eight percent above the market median. And and the next one is really all about being within five percent of the median itself. We look at whether, whether it's above or below the median by five percent, it's really kind of still within market. And what we found was, again, twenty of them are below the market, and basically ten of those classifications are zero to five percent below. Sixty-one classifications were above the market median. And the range of that you can see there, and then thirteen of them were between zero and five percent. So essentially, that, that number of of above and below kind of puts those classes within market. And that's about twenty percent, twenty-three percent to twenty-eight percent of your overall job classes.
Is the sixty-one?
This is actually the sixty-one and the twenty, so between, there, there's actually ten from the, that were below market, five, zero to five. And then there were thirteen above market, zero to five. So those twenty-three comprise about twenty-eight percent of the overall group, and those are considered to be within market. There's also fourteen classes that did not have any data, so insufficient data, we require four matches for that, and so we just do not, we would deal with those through internal equity. And you're going to see the summary of what that looks like here. It's just a graph showing what the results are. But again, paying attention to sort of the above market, sort of and within five percent, certainly is something that just, I think, gives graphically, kind of gives a good, good overview of. And that's base salary. Total comp is a little bit different, but not significantly. There was Michael.
Do you have this data on slide thirty? Do you have that for? I mean, we have one class, let's say, below, more than twenty percent below. Do we know how many people are in that class? And and I guess for the whole thing, to get the same distribution but with a number of people instead of, you know, just saying the classes.
So the same people in the same classification. I don't think we have that at this point in time.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, there might be five people in this class. There might be one person in that class. Yeah, instead of having the classification that we're having, amount of people.
Yep.
These are just next steps in terms of once you have the data and you basically are moving forward. The next piece behind that is essentially setting recommendations for your benchmarked classifications and setting those to market. In this particular case, in working with the district, we determined that the market median was the position which is the middle of the market, not skewed by higher-low pairs. After that point in time, what we'll be looking at also is looking at setting those to that market, but also looking at those other job classifications that were not surveyed in the market and providing recommendations for them based on internal alignment. And internal alignment is a process that you go through, very much like a classification analysis, to determine how similar are they to the extent that you can put them in the same job, the same sort of pay range. And then from there.
I think maybe also talk about the twelve comparator agencies.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, as you, as you do a compensation analysis, these twelve comparative agencies, one of the factors that we also have to look at, like we have a classification in the same arrow. Not all of these agencies are going to have same arrows, so we got to look at, you know, what for matches, or maybe I I D utilizes this in a different way than what we utilize it. So there's a lot of factors that come into play, but on the, on the twelve agencies that we looked at to
Sure.
do a comparative.
So it's towards slide twenty-seven, I think.
All right. So whenever you're looking at a comparator agency, these are some of the things, these are the factors that you're looking at. One essentially is what kind of organization is that it was structured. You're a fair regarded organization, so you want to be sure that when you're looking across a market, that you have agencies that are similar in size, but understand that a ma, a balanced market has high, larger and smaller organizations. What you're really trying to do here is to get as much market data as you can in, and so that you can look at what those trends are in these different locations where these agencies are. The next thing you look at is kind of a, a, a sort of metrics of size. So what is the population that it serves? And sometimes you look at connections, for example, as an indicator of size. How many employees do they have? And then we also look at operating, at operating budgets, because you want to know for the organization what that looks like, could it, it goes to sort of how they pay for, how they fund their operations, I guess is the best way of putting it. The next thing that we look at is services and programs, meaning that what are the different services that that you have here that other agencies have? I I D, I think, is a really good example of that, because very few large organizations actually have large irrigation services, okay? So again, that was one of the reasons why we looked at I I D. And from there, you essentially look at the different programs, okay, and then you look at the labor market geography. And geography is really interesting because essentially, you know, you, if you would look at any organ, any sort of agency, would you be able to find twelve or fifteen agencies that would just like them? And it's not going to happen, okay? So, but you also know that you have a lot of different jobs here that may not just be local jobs, may also be recruiting from other locations outside your immediate geographic area. So again, it's another thing that we look at as a factor. And then we finally look at the cost of living and then the cost of labor. And the reason we do that is because we know that different geographic areas have difference, differences in demographics when it comes to the cost of living, and that can be highly variable. But you also look at the cost of labor, because that number is not so variable, and it's really all about the differences in wages based on the supply and demand of labor. So all of these factors are actually put into spreadsheets, okay, and then they're ranked against each other. So if I had twenty agencies, I'll have twenty different sort of rankings for each one of these factors. And then based on that final number that you get, then you'll say, okay, I look at the, out of the twenty agencies that I'm looking at, these are the twelve that are most similar to the district. That's a quantitative analysis, but then you have to come back and go, okay, I need to do a qualitative analysis here, be, because it's one thing to say the numbers show you this, but are there agencies that didn't make the top twelve that essentially are important competitors to the district? So we had that conversation, and then ultimately came up with our list in June twenty-twenty-two, so.
Okay. And to show, I guess, the, those are the comparator agencies there, and then maybe just show the, an example of a comparative analysis. I think we used the administrative assistant as an example.
Right. Can someone pull it up for me?
I think you can just go through.
Oh, oh, is it always, okay, cool.
It should be at.
Hey, Garrison, can you pull up the two other attachments, the PDFs?
Yeah, uh, once, are they both PDFs? Right, so one, okay.
Now, it's.
That's challenging.
Well, now you're putting weight on it.
I'm not supposed to be that unfulfilled.
So President Paul, and Director Bianco and Director Nelson, one of the things that we will be coming to the board, so once we do this salary comparison, if there is any, any classifications that are below market, we're going to be coming to a recommendation where we need to be at that. So there may be a, a need to seek approval from the board as it relates to a variance of the classification salary structure on that. So that's another reason why we'll be coming to the board for direct, direction on that as well.
Obviously, the ones that are above will not work, or will not change. I mean, we're, we're right?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna.
Okay, could you, could you pull up the other one? The, the, the other one's a class description. That's a class description, so, but I'll go through, I'll go through the data first, and I'll put back the, the class description.
So I mean, that's, that's the reason why we're doing this. I mean, I, I know.
Well, I can go through this briefly. This is up there. This is actually an example of a class description. So you're going to see there's multiple sections here, basically a sort of a summary. It's going to talk about the supervision that this, this sort of classification receives. It's going to talk about any distinguishing characteristics between this one and another one. And then it's going to basically look at all the different tasks of the duties and responsibilities of the actual classification itself. If you can scroll down a bit, the next page, that'd be great.
Which page are we on?
We're on page one.
On the PDF.
On the PDF.
So if you go to the Agenda Online, Director Nelson, the attachments, it's the job description.
Of the administrative's assistant?
Correct. And then Garrison, if you can scroll down a little bit on this attachment. To the next page, page two. Thank you.
And then we basically take a look at what are some of those qualifications in terms of knowledge and abilities? And we can scroll down to the next one as well, because it's going to, the next one is on education and experience. This is the next page.
Scroll down, Garrison, next page. Next page.
Okay. Okay. So again, just basically, here's the minimum qualifications in terms of education and experience and what kind of experience. And then there's going to be some other conditions around, other subtypes of working conditions and things like that. So essentially, that's a class description, and so each and every one of the job classes has one that looks like that.
And then let's just go to the compensation analysis, and then we'll be done.
The, the next attachment, Garrison?
So how do we understand for these, for these jobs, I mean, we have our, our different steps, right? So somebody who's just starting is going to be at the low end, and then somebody who's been here for a while is going to usually work their way up to a higher step.
Someone that, that starts with the, starts with the district, they may not start at step one, depending on their experience.
So, so where, what number are you using for, for our, when you say, what we pay versus what somebody else is paying? Where in that step range are we?
Oh, okay. We're actually comparing the range maximums.
The maximum.
Right, exactly. So you, you take a look at their range structure, whatever their ranges are, whether it's steps or whatever, and you take a look maximum to maximum. And that way, I mean, one of the things you have to make certain of that they don't have longevity pay or other things in there. So it's definitely based on and if you want me to just briefly go through this, you're going to see, first of all, the ranking there on the, the first one on the left. And essentially, this is where your salary ranks relative to the market. So this is actually sorted by base salary. And you're basically, you see that, that line there is essentially where your, your, your pay is. One of the things we also look at is when we take a look at what is the classification title, actually, excuse me. What is the classification title of the particular sort of, what that agency has? And one of the things you're going to notice is that we don't, we don't actually match based on job titles. We actually go through a pretty rigorous process of looking through class descriptions and other documentation to be certain that we have the right job, we have the right level, and and that they are seventy percent match. The next thing you're going to see is that range maximum number. And from there, and again, that is their range maximum, and then after that, you're going to see, all right. The next one is your total compensation. So the first one is essentially your range maximum, base salary. Then when you add in the benefits package, the total compensation. And then we take a look at what is the effective date of this data. And one of the things you're going to see is that it's going to be effective before, before twenty-twenty-three. So it's mostly like a Janu, excuse me, July data, sometimes something earlier, but it will be July data onward or before that. But the data was run at the end of November in twenty-twenty-two, so that will be the cutoff date for the actual effective dates of other data.
So what that means is that as the COLAs that we received in January, that would not be part of that, just like any other agency or district.
Right, exactly. Then we take a look at, if we can find through their MOUs, when their next increase is going to be, we've identified that there, and what percentage that would be, if we could also identify that. So that's really the data from each and every one of the different matches that we have. The next section below that in orange is really about the analysis. So the first one is essentially the average of the market, meaning that those twelve other agencies, I had twelve, are added up and divided by that number, and that is the average. And it's not skewed by higher-low pairs. And, and essentially what you, and it's based on the median of the market. And then you're going to see what the number is or the percentage above or below market that this classification is. It does the same thing for total compensation as well. So now you're seeing the impacts of of your benefits programs on each and every of your job classes that were surveyed. The next metric down there is, is the median of the market, which is the one that we recommend, because it's not really skewed by higher-low pairs. You could take the high, the, the top one out and the bottom one out, and the middle of the data would not change. So we actually recommend the median of the market, and that data is here as well, showing the very same kind of metrics in, in terms of above and below market, both on base salary and total compensation. And there's one of these for each and every one of your ninety-seven job classes.
Yeah. It's interesting, you know, you, you would think that, and you, this is real data, right, for this position?
Oh, yes.
You, you would think that the more expensive, like Irvine, it's a more expensive place to live, right? I mean, a house in Irvine, or rent in Irvine is going to be double probably what it is here. You would expect them to be at the top, but they're not. And even Long Beach Water is, is at the bottom. It's interesting, but you know.
It has to do with, it actually has to do with, in many cases, with the sort of, so remembering that when you're looking at a market, you're not looking at the cost of housing, you're looking at basically the cost of living, which is based on rentals as opposed to purchasing a home, but the very thing you're talking about, which is that it's so variable. But even then, they can be variable. But really, it's about the cost of labor. So is the cost of labor that
No, I get it. And, and you could argue the opposite, is those pla, more desirable places that are more expensive are also where people tend to live. And so you have a
It looks pretty good. There, there's probably a handful of employees that are getting or underpaid. Is that what you'd say? There's a handful that, that are just getting underpaid. And the, and the top is not where it should be. The top should be a little bit higher, and we need to fix, we need to fix those things.
That's correct.
Yeah, but the overall, but the overall, we're, we're
Overall, we're right, we're
Right where we should be. Yeah, we should be kind of proud of that.
We, we should be.
Yeah.
So that is the study session. Again, the study session was just to give you some insight on what the study encompasses.
So, so how do you use this information, Scott and Debbie? How do you use this information? Let's say we have a position. And, and we're confident in our numbers, but we can't attract anybody, right? We, we've had an opening or maybe two openings in a position for six, eight, eight months, twelve months, and we can't find anybody. And we're like, well, we know we're five percent over the median, but, but nobody's applying, nobody's qualified to apply for the job. We need to fill this job. What do we do?
Well, I think that's where the market's going to tell us exactly what other agencies are paying for that position. Are we, so if we're five percent below the market, then that, that, we, we need to up, up the ante on that.
Yeah. But if the study says we're above the market and we're still not attracting somebody.
Well, there's other factors, right?
Then we, then we need to adjust.
Yeah, but there could be other factors. There could be geographic factors. There could be, have people that don't want to live in Coachella Valley for whatever reason that they have. There could be limited schools for that individual. And there's a lot of factors that come into play of why someone will want to relocate here. Engineering, to be honest with you, is probably one of those, one of those classifications that's very hard to recruit. We've used several recruiters. Thankfully, we've hired a couple. But it also has to do with this classification, because when you look at the assistant engineer, and you look at the associate engineer, and you look at the senior engineer, and you look at the engineering manager, as far as the classification, sometimes we have, we've been marketing a position that, in some positions in the engineering classification, you have to have a P E in order to do, to do that work. Well, we may, we may not need that P E, but we're marketing for that P E.
We're asking.
So that's why we have to look at this and say, what is actually the job and the roles that we need? And so this is where this classification review, so we might get an engineering training or an assistant engineer that we need to do that. And then it's kind of like, you know, hard, it hinders a movement for succession planning, because you might have someone that has done, you know, twenty years of engineering work and is at that associate level, but they can't get to the next level because they don't have a P E.
We could help them get their certificate while they're working.
We can, but it's still a barrier.
But it may not be needed.
It, it, but it may not be needed, so that creates a barrier. Then what happens is you have people leave the district to go somewhere else. And then you have, you know, remote work, you have all these factors that come into play. But where we're going and where I feel very confident is that we made that commitment to our bargaining partners. You know, one of the things that I want to leave here when I leave the district is making sure that we have a very solid classification and compensation plan and structure for employees now and to come. And so I think this, this right now allows us to really create that, that overall comprehensive plan of what the district needs. We talked about, we really didn't talk about an example, one of the examples is that you might have, and I'm, I'm just throwing this out as an example. You might have electrician one, two, three and four. There's no difference, and I'm, I'm not demeaning any classification, I'm just using this as an example. Let's just say there's no difference between a one and a four. The only difference is that they have to have a certification for it to be a level four. But day in, day, day in and day out work is still being done at the electrician level. This person's just receiving an additional four, a four level classification because of that certificate. So one of the things that we might be looking at is doing away with maybe an electrician four and providing a certification pay, because the same level of work is being done whether you're one or a four. And so my, my question in the very beginning is, who's doing the one work? Well, the four's doing the one work. Why, why would you compensate a four to do the one work? It, it, it didn't make logical sense to me, and I'm just using this as an example. But I want you guys to understand that what it's looking at.
Stands to reason that your one is gonna wa- be motivated to get certified to the level of the four, just to get that extra pay. Why wouldn't you?
Correct.
Right, I, I, maybe there's a reason, but I, I, I mean, I would get it.
That, that's correct, or something. But again, when you look at classifications, sometimes we've rewarded classification based on seniority. The longer you're here, oh, there's a three, there's a four, but the same level of work is being done. So are we really looking at, you know, that's where I'm talking about the solid classification plan.
I get it, yeah, that, I, that's a good example.
So we thank you for your time, uh, if there are any other questions, we're happy. But we'll be coming to you with kind of our recommendations as it relates to the classification, the compensation study. And then, so you understand the next steps for us, once we do that, we will then, if there's any impacts to any bargaining units, we will then start to meet and confer with those bargaining units to talk about those impacts, so.
Is there ever a situation where you have a, you identify these highs that are fifteen or twenty percent above? I mean, would you ever, I know we typically do for the bargaining units, you know, a, a COLA adjustment at, you know, five percent or whatever the number is, and it's for everybody. I mean, is there some way to make some, bring, bring them back into the, you know, the high ones? How do you bring them back into the, uh?
Just deny COLA.
Into the five percent? Is that you, is that even an option?
Yes, it would be, if there was a recommendation, we would actually change that salary schedule and that individual that, depending on where that individual's at, we might wireate that individual to where that classification, that, that salary schedule, uh, connects up to it once the COLAs and things.
So you might have those recommendations as well?
So, again, we want to thank you for your time. I know that, uh, you've got a lot of things to do, but we appreciate it and that was.
Good job, okay, thank you, yeah, thanks, thank you very much, yeah, it's good. And, and so we'll look forward to the final report, right? And, uh, with no other business before this board, we are adjourned.